Okay, next event on the docket tonight is the public hearing of the Urbana City Council. This is for the purpose to receive public input on the fiscal year 2017-2018 budget. Will the clerk please call the roll?
(inaudible) Ammons?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Hazen?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Roberts? Wu?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
This is the point for public input. Does anyone wish to address the Urbana City Council to comment on the fiscal year 2017-2018 proposed budget? Okay, seeing no one, there's no further business before this hearing. This hearing is adjourned. Third meeting on the schedule tonight is the regular meeting of the Urbana City Council. Since it falls the day, the first meeting after a holiday, it's our custom here to say the Pledge of Allegiance. So we'll stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ammons?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Hazen?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Roberts? Wu?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next up is approval of the minutes. We have three previous meetings from May 15th, 2017. And is that, we have another one from that date?
The joint meeting has to be approved by both bodies.
Okay. And then from May 22nd, which was a special meeting. Is there a motion?
I move approval of the minutes.
Second?
I'll second.
So it's seconded by, moved by Eric, seconded by Jared?
Dean.
Dean. Dean. Any additions or corrections? Okay. All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, those are approved. Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay. Does anyone, let's see, wish to address the Urbana City Council? I have, I have one card from Bishop King James Underwood. He does not wish to speak, but wishes to go on record as indicating they're still concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems. And Cliff Singer and Brigida Piki are here if there are questions regarding their case, but they do not wish to speak at this time. Thanks. Okay. Unfinished business is a continuation of the discussion of our budget. Elizabeth Hannan will be presenting on some of the long-term financial issues. And this is Finance Director Elizabeth Hannan.
So I realize you've heard an awful lot about the budget at this point, and this may be the last of it before we adopt the budget. But as the mayor mentioned in our budget presentation, there were really four long-term financial issues that were significant concern to the city. And so we wanted to get a little more in-depth on those. You'll hear more about all of these at some point in the future as well. So those issues are police and fire pension funding, investment in infrastructure maintenance, the state budget crisis, and the city's structural deficit. So I want to tell you upfront, I don't have the answers or the solutions to all of these problems tonight. So just to manage the expectations here. But it is worth doing a little more education before we jump into them individually at some point in the future. So in terms of police and fire pension funding, the problem is that our current practice of funding the minimum required by state law will lead to significantly higher future costs for our pensions. Those costs eventually would grow large enough that we would probably be required to reduce service levels even in order to fund the minimum requirement. So basically, we're pushing those obligations off onto some future generation of city staff and council members, and I don't think that's something we want to do. So, let's talk about how we got here. So up through the 2013 tax levy, the city paid pensions based on a goal of 100% funding by 2032. But, beginning in 2014, the levy amount was reduced over two years to the minimum required by state law, and this was done in order to avoid budget reductions and pay wage increases. So we're now at that minimum required by state law. So, one of the reasons our pension obligation is so large is that the state legislature, over many years, approved numerous benefit increases for both police and fire pension funds. And also, the funding level will fluctuate regardless, just due to changes in assumptions about investment returns, mortality rates, disability rates, et cetera. A good example of that is that, over time, the expectations about how long our retirees will live has grown longer. And so that means if one of our retirees lives to 80 instead of 75, we're paying a pension for five more years, and we need to try to accurately anticipate and set aside for that. So this chart shows, in the darker blue, what we actually funded for police and fire pensions in our 2016 tax levy, and in the lighter blue, the calculated amount based on our previous funding method. So, the difference here is $1.4 million. So this year, in the 2016 tax levy, we're putting $1.4 million less into those pension funds than we would have under the old funding method. This chart shows our unfunded liability for both pension funds over the last three years. The unfunded liability in the police fund is much larger than in the fire fund, and there are a variety of reasons for that. But altogether, our current unfunded liability is about $23.6 million. That's money we have to pay at some point in time. If we don't, then essentially, we're paying interest on that money, because it's not in the pension fund earning investment income for them. So really, this is what it comes down to with, with public safety pensions. It's either pay now or pay later, and if we pay later, we're going to pay much, much more than if we pay now. The funds we contribute now earn investment income until they're needed to pay benefits in the future. Again, if we don't pay now, we're going to pay that contribution that we would have made now, plus, we're going to have to make up all that investment income that was not earned. So just as a point of reference, the Government Finance Officers Association, which is the professional, national professional organization for municipal finance directors, recommends best practices in a variety of areas. Their best practice for pension funding is to target 100% funding using a closed period for amortization of ideally 15 to 20 years. Prior to 2014, with our goal of 100% funded by 2032, we were consistent with that best practice. The state law, which requires 90% funding by 2040, which is what we are currently funding based on, is not consistent with the best practice. So, in terms of next steps to resolve this problem, the mayor and I actually met last Friday with the presidents of both pension boards to talk about that issue. And we've agreed to continue to discuss with them and to have an actuary do some projections for us to show a variety of options that are consistent with best practices. There's not necessarily one right answer that would help us move toward a more appropriate funding method. But we also need to be conscious of the fact that the city can't simply afford to just increase annual contributions by $1.4 million overnight. So we'll be looking for a compromise, but one that's consistent with best practices. We will probably have to increase that funding over a period of time in interim steps. And we may also want to consider if we receive any significant one-time revenue, whether we want to allocate some or all of that to the pension funds, because that would allow us to immediately pay down a big chunk of unfunded liability, reducing our future costs. So you will, you're going to hear more about that, this issue. I expect that probably late summer to fall, we'll bring in an actuary who will give you a whole lot more detail on projections and alternatives based on the city's pension information. So the second issue is investment in infrastructure maintenance. So again, this is very similar to the pension funding issue. We're deferring expenses, basically. If we need, if we defer needed rehabilitation, the condition of our infrastructure is going to deteriorate to the point where we're going to have a more expensive bill in the long term. So, Bill could speak more eloquently about this. But generally, in the life of a road, there may be two to three times where there's a rehabilitation or a resurfacing project before you're required to do a complete reconstruction. If you don't do that interim maintenance, you're going to have to do that complete reconstruction more often, and that's going to cost you more money. So, again, how did we get here? When I looked back over years and years of contributions to our capital improvement funds, I have to say, I'm not sure it was ever adequately funded. There have not been any increases in recurring funding specifically for transportation improvements in many years. For many years, the level of the support stayed the same. And even when we increased the motor fuel tax a few years ago, we increased the local motor fuel tax, but at the same time, we reduced the general fund support to the capital improvement fund. So there really was no increase in funding for transportation. Also, and I think Bill mentioned this in his capital improvement presentation, but there are regulations that affect our costs, so he specifically pointed out ADA requirements. Those are real obligations that we have to meet, and they have a cost. So, current replacement cycle for streets, and we can only estimate this at this point, but what Public Works has estimated for arterial and collector streets, which are our major roads, the replacement cycle is probably more than 60 years, and for local streets, it's probably more than 90 years. That's way beyond the range where we would like to see it. So, next steps on this are understanding the funding gap for each of our infrastructure systems, and transportation is the one that we're most concerned about. So that will be the first one that Public Works looks at. Bill and his staff will be digging into that, getting a better assessment about the, of the condition of our streets, and what it would actually cost to put them on a, where appropriate replacement cycle. Also then, once we have that information, we will have to identify appropriate funding sources to address the shortfall. So, some of the options we'll have are increasing existing sources of revenue. For example, local motor fuel tax to pay for transportation improvements. Most would consider that an appropriate revenue source. We may want to look at accelerating improvements by issuing debt, provided we have an appropriate source of funds to repay. And the local motor fuel tax could be that source of repayment. Also, again, and this is the second time I've said this, if we have any one-time revenue, we may want to consider allocating that to capital improvements. However, that conflicts with what I told you about pensions, so there's obviously some prioritizing that needs to happen here. We can't spend it twice. So, another one of the issues that we've been talking about is the state budget crisis. And I think we all know by now, once again, they passed the deadline, and we still don't have a state budget. So the problem really is that, in an effort to balance the state budget, there are various bills that have come up in the legislature, and there are probably five or 10 different variations of property tax freeze bills. There's a number of bills that would change the distribution of income tax to local governments. So some of those would divert revenue from local governments to the state, and in the case of property tax caps, that really doesn't do anything for the state except soften the blow of revenue increases they may impose. So it reduces revenue to local governments, but gets no additional revenue for the state. So, one of the big issues with this is that it's darn near impossible to plan for this, because we don't know what's going to happen, and we don't know when it's going to happen. But we know something's going to happen here. I think I'm pretty confident. So to get an idea of the scope of this problem, a 50% reduction in state shared income tax, and there has been a bill that proposes that, I don't think that's the current version, would reduce general fund revenues for the city by $2 million annually, and we assume that would be forever into the future. That's a pretty big chunk of our general fund revenue. Property tax freeze proposals, again, they vary, there are different versions out there. But if we were unable to tap growth and assess value, assuming for 2017, it was the same as it was for the 2016 tax levy, that would mean a loss of $330,000 in revenue just in that one year, if we couldn't tap that growth. The latest version I saw was proposing basically zero growth in the extension. So, what can we do? Again, we don't, we don't control this situation, so the best we can do is to be prepared by setting aside additional reserves, so that if and when this happens, we can have time to make appropriate adjustments in a thoughtful way. We will be preparing for additional budget reductions. Some of those we may need to do sooner rather than later. Some of those may be on the back burner for, just in case the state imposes some hardship on us. So finally, the last issue that we talked about in the budget message was the structural deficit. So, a structural deficit is when recurring expenditures are growing faster than recurring revenues. So when that happens, it's extremely difficult to maintain a balanced budget from year to year without increases in revenues or reductions in expenditures. It doesn't mean that we don't have a balanced budget at the moment, but this is a more forward way, forward-looking way of thinking about it. So, even though we have a balanced budget now, if the current trend continues, that will not last. So this is a little bit more difficult to think about and address. Some of the things we might consider are changing the mix of revenues over time, so that revenue growth keeps pace with growing expenditures. We could also look at keeping our growth for current expenditures very low, which is very challenging, since most of our general fund expenditures are for wages. We could reduce service levels in staffing, or more likely, we'll use a combination of those strategies. So there are some very specific concerns related to this, that I, I think we have talked about these before, but I want to make sure that this is clear. The biggest concern currently is that we expect in the current fiscal year, so the year that's going to end this June 30th, at the end of this month, that our sales tax revenues will decrease by 2.5% from where they were last fiscal year. That's fairly alarming. And then to top that off, we expect that in next fiscal year, they're only going to grow about 1%. So, next year, we won't even be at the level of sales tax revenue that we expected for this year. And, sales tax is 28% of our general fund revenue. So that's a really big chunk, that's nearly a third. Any reductions in state shared revenues or property tax freeze would only make the problem that much worse. So, so this is a, I will be updating our long-term forecast, but this is, this is just a real quick look, and this looks at, for FY18, where we're starting. The light blue line is revenues, the darker blue line is expense. And, you can see that right now, we have a balanced budget. Our revenues are higher than our expenses. But if our revenues grow at the current underlying rate of growth, so take out the new, the new revenue that we have included in the budget for next year, our underlying rate of growth is about 1%. If they continue to grow at that level, and our expenses grew at more like the rate of inflation, which is 2%, 2.5%, very quickly, you can see that those lines cross. Our expenses are higher than our revenues. So this is just sort of a picture of what a structural deficit looks like. We know that at some point, those lines will cross without some action. So, for this issue, really, the steps here, and some of these are very broad, big picture, but focus on economic development is very important, because that's what's going to grow our tax base. So whether it's assessed value that gives us more taxing ability without having to raise the rate on people, or whether it's retail development that drives our sales tax revenue, economic development is really critical. We want to avoid dependence on unpredictable sources of revenue, so as we make decisions about revenues, give preference to revenues that are going to grow with our costs. Also, we want to make sure that where we have user fees associated with various programs, we want to make sure that they grow with our costs. And so we need to track those closely. It's been a little bit of challenge with our staffing level, just having time to do that, but it's an important thing, and we'll need to find time to do it. Again, diversify our sources of revenues, and we may want to look at revising our policy on budgeting recurring expenditures at the level of recurring revenue. So our current policy is, we define a balanced budget as recurring revenues are, well, recurring expenditures, bleh, recurring expenditures are not more than the level of recurring revenue. And it's not unusual for cities to have a policy that we maintain a little bit of gap there. So we may want to say that, for example, recurring revenue, recurring expenditures are not going to be more than, you know, 98% of recurring revenues. Gives us a little cushion again. So, getting down to details of what we plan to do, we will implement the VSIP, as we discussed earlier. That's the voluntary separation incentive program, and we plan to do that as soon as possible after the start of the new fiscal year. And we will also be planning for additional budget reductions. May not need to make them now, but we need to be prepared. We will follow up with a fairly detailed presentation about pension funding options. We'll have an actuary come and speak to you at some point, late summer or fall, before we look at the next property tax levy. We will recommend revising the city's financial policies to set a limit of budgeting recurring expenditures at only 97.5% of recurring revenues, which is about where we are right now in this proposed budget. But as you can see, because we have a structural deficit, we would not remain there without some proactive action. And we'll also want to revise our policy on pension funding, once we have a better look at the options and get some input on the options. Public Works is going to be evaluating the funding gap for transportation infrastructure. Again, that's the first one that we're going to tackle, but there probably will be others in the future. The state budget crisis is a critical priority for us. I don't know how to say it. It's unpredictable. The impact could be extremely large. And so as soon as we have the opportunity, we need to plan to build our reserves. That probably means that we need to avoid making mid-year increases in the budget. We've, we've done that a number of times over the past few years, but we really need to build those reserves, and we need to be very careful about spending additional money. And then we should address the structural deficit as we make decisions about new revenues and new expenses. So again, looking for sources of revenue that will tend to grow with our expenditures, or at least at the same rate as our expenditures. So, that, that's a real quick overview. I do, I have time for questions, certainly if you have any at this point. I do want to mention that next week on the agenda, we will have the ordinance adopting the annual budget. We'll have an ordinance amending the current budget. So, in your budget document, there's a column that says FY17 estimates. We want to amend the budget to match those estimates, so that we've capped people at those levels. And also, one part of the budget plan was to increase the food and beverage tax by 1.5% to 1.5%. And that will also be on the agenda for committee next week. So those will be the final actions that you need to approve to have a budget for FY18.
Are there any questions for Elizabeth? Bill?
Yeah, thanks. That was a really good overview. Are these slides available online for, for other people, or could you make them available?
I'm sure I could make them available. Yeah, I was working on them until 6:30, so.
Okay. And then, I know there's a bill awaiting the governor's signature to increase the phone surcharge for Metcalf. If that passes, it would roughly double that surcharge, I think. Has Metcalf talked at all about how that would affect what they pass along to the cities?
Yeah, my understanding is we might not see an immediate impact. I think the effective date was January 1, 18, and then there's usually a lag time since the state collects the revenue before we actually begin to receive it. I think the mayor may have more.
Ralph Caldwell wasn't sure if we would see it in fiscal year 19. It might be fiscal year 20. Hoping for 19, but certainly not this current fiscal year. But yes, it went from, the surcharge went from 87 cents to $1.50.
And do you know if the governor, how the governor feels about that, or is that going to be a bargaining chip or something?
Don't know, but people are working very hard to get him to sign it. Chicago got $5, so that will help sweeten the pot.
I've heard several service taxes proposed at the state level. I think some of them were part of the grand bargain, but do any of those trickle down to local?
So, I'm not sure at this point how those would be distributed, if they would be treated like a use tax and distributed on a per capita basis, or how that would work. But I think the bill that was finally passed was pretty watered down. It was a very limited group of businesses that would be affected. It was dry cleaners and...
Tattoo parlors.
Yeah, tattoo parlors. I mean, there were, it was a very small list of businesses that would actually have to collect the service tax.
Yeah, I've suggested to both our representatives, or Senator and our representative, that a 1% tax on medical care would really be a good idea.
That would generate a lot of revenue here.
That would be shared equally with the local. As far as the one-time revenue distribution or spending goes, it seems like if you have a Public Works project, like you were talking about, that would, if you could spend $300,000 to save a million on reconstructing a road, that you could prioritize that over pension fund contributions that may not have that same return, but I don't know. Is there a way to compare those and see what the long-term?
I think, I think as we get further into this, I can look at a way to do that, but either, not spending the money on either one of those things will cost you substantially more in the future. It's a little, it's going to be a little difficult to evaluate, but we can try.
Okay, thank you.
Eric?
So you briefly mentioned issuing bonds. And presumably, that's a net plus if what you have to pay to the bondholders in interest is smaller than your opportu, you know, than what you gain by the proceeds from the bonds. Either by being able to put that in the pension fund, or by being able to, you know, save substantial money. You're, you're looking a little puzzled by that.
Yeah, I think I was specifically thinking about bonds to pay for capital improvements. Pension obligation bonds are a whole, whole nother issue.
But, but is that, is that something that is reasonable to think about? I mean, are, is the interest rate structure such, for example, that what we would have to pay to bondholders for interest would be less than the return on the proceeds from the bonds?
That, that's a pretty technical area, but there, there are laws about that, so you, you can't issue bonds and invest them at a higher interest rate to make money. That's called arbitrage.
Ahah.
And there are penalties for that.
Ah, so public, public bodies can't play games like that.
No, 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 yeah. We can't borrow money at a low rate and then earn money at a higher rate, and even if we thought we could, there would be nothing guaranteed, but no, but no, we don't, we're not going to do that.
Sad. Let me ask one other question. It seems to me that, likely, although I don't know in detail, that some of the issues we face are similar to issues that champagne is facing. And, it also seems to me that always, we're always looking... And it also seems to me that always, we're always looking over our shoulder, or always looking next door whenever we go to revenue sources from the taxpayers. Is it, I guess really, this might be a question for the mayor, is it reasonable to try to do some coordination with Champaign, so that if it's absolutely necessary to raise revenue, it could be done in such a way that it wouldn't change our competitive situation with Champaign?
We could try. We tend to work closely with Champaign, but I can't promise anything at this point.
But, yeah, but it would be worth thinking about, I think, because we're kind of in the same boat. We're both getting screwed over by the state in a similar fashion. We're both being impinged on by what's not going to the university. And I don't know what their situation is with respect to their fire and police pensions, but it, you know, it may be if they're feeling similar pressures. Because we're always want to be sure that we're not doing things that are going to really hurt our competitive situation, but maybe, maybe there could be a partial truce in that competition that would help both of us govern.
So there have been cases in the past where we've worked together. For example, both cities implemented a stormwater management fee around the same time. There was some coordination on locomotive fuel tax, though I think our rate is currently higher than theirs. They're experiencing many of the same things we are, but not in some cases to the same extent. So, you know, I have reason to believe that some of their revenues aren't performing as well as they would like, but the impact is not as dramatic as it is for us. For example, in terms of sales tax, we really haven't had significant new retail in a long, long time, whereas their retail, they're always getting new retail in Champaign, it seems. And so I would guess that in terms of, you know, even though sales tax is weak statewide, the impact on them, I'm going to guess is not as significant as it is on us.
Any other questions? Mary Alice?
I just had a clarifying question on the pensions. So it says here in the document that it's been, the last two years, funding was reduced from the amount recommended by the city's actuarial, and it's about 1 million annually for both funds, right? So does that mean that we're about 2 million in the hole? Or, I know that's, that's a difficult question.
Yeah, it's complicated because, so if you say, what are we in the hole? I think I had a number for the total unfunded liability with something like $23.6 million. So that's how far short we are of being 100% funded. But there are a lot of things that affect the unfunded liability, you know, if you have a year with very bad investment returns, that's one of the things the trustees do is invest the funds. We haven't had any legislated changes in benefits for a while, but still things like actuarial assumptions. So it's not, you can't just point to one thing. So if I had to give you a number for what we're in the hole, our obligation that we're short of that 100% funding is currently $23.6 million.
So we were at 93%, let's see here, in 2014, and 83% in 2016. And I understand the compound interest and, you know, all that stuff rolls up and so forth. But I guess what I'm trying to figure out here is if we went back to the 93%, what would that mean in terms of what we would be paying? If we, because we're not there right now, right? So the new proposed budget, what percentage would we be funding it at this year?
So that's a very complicated question, and I'm going to let the actuary answer that. When he comes to speak to you, actuaries are very mysterious beings and they take a whole lot of details and try to make sense out of it for us, but I'm definitely not an actuary, so.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? Jared and then Dean?
At the, that total, is that since 2014, that 23 million?
No, 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 so that, that's our current, that's our current position, how far short we are of that 100% funded mark.
Right.
But since, so over the last, so if you say over the last two tax levy years, how much we funded short of what the actuary would have recommended, that's probably 2 million, something like that.
So over how long a period of time has it taken us to build up to 23 million?
Oh, I don't, I don't even know how long the pension funds have been in existence. It's...
So that's like a lifetime shortfall?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's a good way to think of it. And again, I mean, one of the things that really influenced that, we may have been at a point, you know, back in, back around 1990, where we were well-funded, but then the state legislature made a practice of every few years, increasing benefits for police and fire pensions. So when they increase benefits, but we haven't been setting aside money for them all those years, that immediately creates an unfunded liability to meet that obligation. And that happened repeatedly, you know, from the early 90s through 2005 or so. I don't think, that hasn't happened in a while now, but that's a large part of where that unfunded liability came from. It wasn't because the city wasn't making appropriate contributions. Most of it is because of those legislative benefit increases. I have a list if you'd like for me to share that.
I would. So are we paying out what we owe in our pensions currently to 100%?
Yeah, sure. I mean, we meet, we're meeting all of our obligations and there's no reason to think we won't at some point. So every pensioner who's, who's owed a paycheck gets paid every month. There's no reason to think that would stop. This is, the reason this is a long-term issue is that we're not meeting our funding goals, and so our costs are going to increase in the future, really exponentially, because we're not meeting those goals now. That's, that's the concern. It's not that we're not going to be able to pay our pensioners.
So we're still able to handle the load even with a $23 million shortfall?
Yeah, we're actually in much better shape than many pension funds in Illinois, unfortunately.
Wow. I'm kidding.
Dean, and then Aaron, and then Eric.
On the food and beverage tax, is that what you called it?
Yes.
Possibility. My question is pretty similar to Eric's, or my concerns were pretty similar to Eric's about the competitive nature. So I guess my question is, do you know if Champaign or anyone else in the area is even entertaining the same idea? Have they, has there been any talk about it?
So there are cities that have higher food and beverage taxes. Champaign is currently at 1.5% of 1%. I will tell you that when we last increased it, I think it was in 2015, maybe 2014, we increased it from 1.5% to 1%. We did not see any drop, drop off in the underlying sales that support that tax. So there may just not be a lot of sensitivity to that minor increase in your bill when you leave a restaurant.
Okay, thank you.
Some nearby communities are at 2%.
Yeah, I don't remember off the top of my head, but I think maybe Normal, Bloomington also.
Aaron?
Thank you, Elizabeth, for the presentation overview. I had, I was going to ask a clarifying question that Jared did, because I wanted to make sure that the listeners understood exactly what that meant to have a 93% funded or 87% funded, if, what does that mean to a person who actually retires today, or has retired several years ago? So I thank you for answering that. How are our other pension funds, the, the other union members, or the other people who are involved in the retirement plans, what do their funds look like?
So, so we have the police and fire pension funds. Both of those are managed by a board of trustees. I'm a trustee for both of those funds, and there are four other trustees on each board. Those are very different from the other pension fund we have, which is the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. The Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund is managed centrally for all the municipalities across the state. I think our funding level currently with IMRF, and I'm guessing a little bit is high 80s to, to close to 90. It tends to fluctuate. I mean, it's normal that it fluctuates a little bit, because your experience is different each year. But in IMRF, we pay a fixed percent of pay. It's adjusted every year, but we pay a specific percent of pay for each employee who participates in IMRF. And each employee pays 4.5%. In the police and fire pension funds, the whole funding method is very different, the whole method of management is very different. So I would say IMRF is probably a little better funded currently than police and fire, but, I mean, none of them are, none of them are as bad as some other cities that I've seen. Again, the concern is just the long-term cost.
So if I understand you correctly, then the, our contribution for the, let's say the ASME workers that work for the city, we, we are not under any obligation to increase our contribution for them to reach the 100% funded levels?
So IMRF sets the contribution amounts annually. So currently, we're paying about 12% annually, but it's based on state law that, that determines how that pension system is managed.
Are they on a 100% funded trajectory also? Or are they under, under the 90% trajectory that the state legislature has set for, like SIRS?
You know, I want to go back and look at that and be sure. I think it's, it's not as low as the SIRS model.
Just so that people are aware, SIRS, the State University Retirement System annuities, and the fund is like 42% funded. So we're talking about 93% versus 87% and stuff like that, I wanted to at least put some context to what some other folks are looking at. You mentioned the 2% funded liability for other folks, but there's some real issues that we're facing across the state. And I appreciate the, you looking at the long-term impact of how much it costs folks down the line, the future councils, future staff, and stuff like that. And I have talked to, to the representative about, you know, why aren't we getting any movement at the state level on increasing the state motor fuel tax? And it just doesn't seem to be a lot of traction or the will there within the House and the Senate to, to increase that. It hasn't been increased in a long time either.
20 years.
So I don't understand why that's not something that's a, a part of the, the equation here, considering the infrastructure issues that we have all over the state, not just in Champaign or Abana. One of the things that we seem to, well, I just want to have a more direct conversation around as we talk about possible budget reductions and stuff like that. Do you have recommendations on, I appreciate the bonds, but what other avenue and other ways that we can increase revenue? And what's on the horizon for budget cuts? What areas would we be looking at, you know?
Yeah, and well, so as you know, we talked about the voluntary separation incentive program, that's sort of the first thing on our agenda. We've also talked about creating an inventory of city services, so that as we look at budget cuts beyond that, we can begin to assess priority of various city services in relation to our organizational goals, our mission, council goals. What, one of the, one of the issues, just to be perfectly honest, is that we've either cut the budget repeatedly, or in some cases, we've just held it, held it constant while costs are growing. And we're probably at a point where it's not realistic to think we can just squeeze, keep squeezing it tighter and tighter. And so we, we need to be realistic, and if we're forced to make additional budget cuts, we're probably talking about looking at, you know, what are some city services that may be lower priority that we can learn to live without? But no, I, I mean, certainly before we do that, we would have a conversation with council, the mayor, and I would work on that together and make some recommendations, but no specifics at this point.
And so maybe this is sort of out of your wheelhouse, but since you're the budget person, and you're sitting there, I'll ask you. We spent a lot of time and energy and diverting of possible tax revenue through the TIF funds and stuff like that. And you said economic development is one of the ways that we can, as we grow the economic base, we can address some of the, the structural deficit and make sure we don't have a structural deficit. So has there been an assessment from you and your office as it relates to what the, what that avenue, TIF funding and all the incentives that we have tried to put in place, has it worked for us? Is it working for us?
I mean, we haven't done that type of assessment in finance. I could certainly inquire whether our economic development staff have done that.
Well, it just seems though, in your position, as you're looking at the structural deficits, then it seems to me that it would be important that we understand what's working for us and what's not working, right? You know, so I don't know if there was a, some sort of synergy between the two departments, so that you can, you can do your job even better.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, I, I think it's important to understand that. Unfortunately, there's many important things that we really just don't have time to get to. I mean, a good example is evaluating all the fees on our fee schedule. That was something I really wanted to accomplish in the past year, and, you know, we're not, we're not done with that at this point, and I'm not quite sure when we will be. So we're, you know, constantly prioritizing.
The last question was in relationship to the bonds. The, this was something I floated almost a year ago, to try to see if there was any, I don't know, any will here amongst the council, but it seems as though we try to stay away from the bonds as much as we possibly can. What's your thought about that?
I don't, I don't think that issuing debt is a bad thing. I mean, sometimes it's appropriate, so I, but I think the issue right now is if we wanted to issue, say, $10 million in bonds to accelerate some capital improvements, I'm not sure how we would pay the debt service. And so I think that, you know, if we look at, for example, issuing bonds for capital improvements, that probably goes hand in hand with perhaps an increase in the motor fuel tax, or some source of revenue that's going to pay the debt service.
And so the amount that we're receiving right now from the locomotive fuel tax, you don't think, let's say we wanted to float a 10 or 20 million dollar bond to do some of the major infrastructure issues, we don't think that the amount that we receive right now is enough to cover that.
Well, all the revenue that we're getting right now is going directly into capital improvements that we're doing right now.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Eric?
So I tried to understand a few years ago, the mysteries of actuarial science, to see if, to see how, how, and how, what jeopardy my pension was. And if I'm, if I've got this right, I mean, it depends on the demographics of your workforce, but if I understand this right, the $2 million that we didn't put into the fire and police funds the past two years, by the time this plays out through the system, it'll probably be about six or seven million dollars that we'll have to put in to make up for that.
Again, I'm not an actuary, but that doesn't sound farfetched to me, no.
Okay.
That's, that's fundamentally what the problem is.
That's, yeah, that's roughly the, the situation, okay.
Bill?
So we've heard that with the state budget situation, the state bonds are near junk status, and I guess that for state bonds, junk status is still only 4% interest or something like that. So there's not a, it doesn't appear to be a big rush for the exits, like people think Illinois is going to, not, they're going to default on their bonds. But does that, my question is, does that affect what kinds of rates cities can get on bonding?
So I, I think to some extent, because we're a city in the state of Illinois, it does. I mean, not as directly as the state itself, but when, so if, if we were to go and, and have, you know, Moody's or Standard and Poor's rate us to do a public sale of bonds, they would be looking at a whole lot of things, but I think they would probably consider the state's condition and the likelihood that we might have reduced revenues in the future from the state. I mean, that would certainly have to be a consideration.
So would it be fair to, to say or think that the budget situation at the state is already costing cities more in bonding interest now?
It's hard to say, but yeah, I think that's probably a fair statement.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Elizabeth. And again, next week, we'll be considering the budget ordinance and the budget amendment. Reports from the Committee of the Whole.
So on behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I present ordinance number 2017-05-023, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of certain real estate, 2201 Philo Road, with a recommendation that council approve.
I'll second.
Seconded by Aaron? Sorry, Jared?
We look alike, though.
Dean sounded alike.
Yeah, they all look alike.
Yeah, yeah, they all look alike. All these young guys look alike.
Um, are there any other questions from Bill, Public Works, or for Bill at Public Works? Okay, a reminder, this is the property that's directly south of the fire station on Filo Road. Uh, this requires a roll call vote. Go ahead.
Hammond?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes.
On behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I present resolution number 2017-05-038R, a resolution approving the capital improvement plan as presented by Public Works. On behalf of the committee, I move approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Dean. Any comments or questions? Aaron?
So, uh, been thinking about this quite a bit since our last meeting, and, uh, I am going to take a position on this proposed budget because I have been asking whether it's Public Works and other departments to, um, present a clear agenda or a clear proposal to address some of the issues as it relates to minority participation. And, uh, and again, I have yet to see an actual proposal to address the concerns that I have raised on behalf of my constituents, and so I will be abstaining from this vote. I will pass. I'm not going to vote on this budget.
Any other comments? Bill?
Um, yeah, um, I wonder if I could just get some clarification from Bill on that same issue. I think you guys said that for the MCOR project, the required participation rate was 3% or something like that for minority, and I, I wasn't sure if that meant, when you say participation rate, does that mean the percentage of the contracts awarded to minority businesses should have to be at least 3% of the total?
Correct. 3% of the total.
Okay. But that, so that doesn't really address hiring minorities, only minority business owners?
Correct. Businesses.
As far as, um, hiring women and minorities for the projects, I know that our Human Relations Commission goes through a process of approving contractors. Is that same process followed for any contractors that work on this MCOR project?
No, because that's a state awarded contract.
Okay. And then, um, so just for the projects that we do, that we approve contractors for, um, I would, and this isn't for Bill, I think just in general, I'd like to have a future discussion, maybe a presentation from Human Relations Commission, um, explaining exactly what they look at and how they encourage businesses to, um, to implement affirmative action policies, which is our policy, to, um, in order to encourage the hiring of minority and women's and, uh, and, um, get them involved in, uh, in, not internships, uh, like, uh...
Apprenticeships?
Apprenticeships, that's what I'm trying to think of, thanks. Um, because I don't think we're, I, I don't, I mean, I, I've looked at those reports occasionally, and I just see very little movement. Sometimes a, a company will be on probation for a while, and then they'll be back off probation, but I can't tell why because they increased minority hiring by one or something. And, um, I just, I thi, I don't think it's, it's working very well. So I'd like to understand better about why, um, more apprentices, apprenticeships and, and why, um, more minority hiring can't be done on those contracts at least.
I would like to let the council and the public know that I've been discussing with Elizabeth, um, the re, revising of our procurement policy. It's one of the policies that is long overdue for an update, and one of the goals of that would be make sure it's, we have an inclusive procurement policy. We may be working with, um, a gentleman to, to help us rewrite the policy. So, so we're going to be looking at this from, from, you know, from an overall perspective of the city. So that'll be, um, once the budget is underway or passed, and we'll start looking at that this summer. So it will address, I think it will address many of the concerns that you've been raising for several years, Aaron. Jared?
This might be a question for you, Bill, or one of our other staff members. Do we have, or maybe Jim, an ordinance addressing this stuff that's been passed by council? That sets any kind of standards for us as the city?
I'm not aware of any specific ordinance.
That would be part of the policy that we would be developing.
I was just going to say, it's just part of your procurement policy idea?
Other than our EEO compliance through the HRO.
Right. But that's kind of what you're talking about, Dan?
Yes. Yes. It's just, yeah. But it, it will take a while, but the intention is to do it. Um, I had a question about the capital improvement plan. First of all, I appreciate, um, pulling out the projects that are going to be done this year. It's a lot easier to read, much larger type than, than the book, and I noticed that the Vine Street resurfacing isn't on that, and we have been talking about that in our budget presentations. Has that been moved to a different year, or is that just an oversight?
It's, um...
Or am I not reading it?
It's part of the, um, resurfacing work that we want to do this fall, so, um, I'm trying to think, maybe it was an oversight. Hold on. Even preservation. Oh, of course, yeah. Thank you. It's in this year's budget. The money is in FY17's budget. Yeah, this is FY18, sorry.
Okay, sorry. Good, thank you. It just didn't get done this year, but it's going to be, okay, great. All right, Bill?
Yeah, I do have a question about, um, some of the projects. Like, there was some money allocated for just, uh, concrete repair and servicing, kind of general funds. Um, so those aren't itemized in the capital improvement project, right? That's just kind of done as needed?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, um, as we look to FY18, we probably have a feel for where some of those areas may be targeted. For example, just take concrete patching, for example. We did a lot of work on Florida, at Filo, the industrial, uh, court, Tatlin Court area. We did some patching. Right by the parking deck, we did some patching. So, um, there's probably a feel for where those locations will be, but it hasn't been, the list hasn't been assembled at this time.
Okay. I just weigh in, um, Beslan, Washington and Pennsylvania. I've noticed that there are, um, bike routes that have missing chunks on the, near the curb, like the, the, within the three-foot area of the curb. And, um, it's not just that it's bumpy, I could deal with that, but a lot of people like to ride and legally are supposed to ride in that three-foot area, but when they get to one of those, they tend to swerve out. And so it's really a safety issue. So I wonder if you could especially look at some of those bike routes and, um, kind of evaluate it from that perspective?
Washington, Beslan and...
And Pennsylvania, um, more on campus. I think Champaign has something, that, is that a U of I street, actually?
Yes.
Okay. I think Champaign had some deal with them, some intergovernment agreement. They were going to help do their section of Pennsylvania. I don't know. It needs work.
The short story is, there was about $6 million the state provided the university for St. Mary's reconstruction. Um, before the big NCAA tennis tournament, they did some quick work there. They said it felt that was adequate for the time being, and they redirected the $6 million to other streets on campus. Um, they had to be streets that a highway authority had jurisdiction over. The university's not a highway authority, so they had to enter into an agreement with the City of Champaign to be the lead agency for the work. They've selected a variety of streets to do. Pennsylvania is one of the last ones, actually, of that, of those multi-million dollars, and it's from Wright Street West, um, to take care of Pennsylvania.
Okay, thanks.
Aaron?
I had a question for you, Jim. Um, as it relates to, and maybe it's, it could be Diane or anyone who can answer it. It's, we've heard this turn, this number of 3%, for instance, as involvement in, uh, in, uh, street repairs type of projects, right? Which varies, is different from the vertical projects. Is it illegal, uh, for our department heads to say, "We're going to implement a particular goal," or "We're going to, uh, work to achieve this particular goal" without it being some sort of resolution or ordinance for the city?
Any problem with setting, uh, minority participation rates or goals suggests the need, whether we do it independently or somehow co-opt another one's applicable study, a minority participation rate study. Otherwise, I believe, I can't remember the US Supreme Court case that addressed that. Um, it was a Virginia case. It may have been the Richmond case, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, you get into, obviously, reverse discrimination exposure. Uh, federal Supreme Court law provides that there must be some study that identifies the basis for the rate. If we do that, and that doesn't mean we have to conduct our own study. If somebody else has conducted a study, that's directly relevant. For instance, to my recollection, in fact, you may have provided it to me, uh, the Capitol Board for the state of Illinois has divided the state up, uh, and has established rates for various parts of the state. But there are broad areas of the state, like a whole swath of central Illinois, including rural areas, has a minority rate, a female-owned business rate, and a veterans' participation rate. It's been a while since I've looked at that as well as the research I've done, but again, it deals with owned businesses, not actual employees of those businesses. My guess, and I will tell you it's purely a guess, that the studies anticipate that minority-owned businesses, whether it's minority, uh, women's or veterans, have a propensity of hiring minorities, women and veterans, when they can. So maybe there is a trickle-down from the owned to the employee level. But there has to be some justification, and if we were to take that Capitol Board, uh, minority study, we would have to tweak it to match. And it isn't just, uh, picking a number. The, the talent pool within the minority or female-owned or veterans has to be taken into consideration as well in terms of whether you're meeting that minority. And there has been some discussion about, and in fact, you participated in some of it, for instance, I think it was in road or concrete, that it's very difficult to find minorities, minority-owned businesses. Now the question becomes, which really addresses your issue, what about the employees they hire to get work to minorities, regardless of who owns the business? Our EEO, um, uh, standards or process in the HRO office hopefully is designed to address that. How effective that is, I don't know, because I've not done an assessment, and I'm not sure anyone has. So, but the key is, where I think you're going is getting the employees, people, not just own, owners.
Well, so from my perspective, I just want to be clear that I'm talking about both, right? And I do understand that, um, the propensity for a minority-owned business to hire other minorities, right? Um, when I finished the term of my predecessor, one of the first meetings I had was with Todd Rint to discuss these issues, particular issues, and I heard the same thing about a disparity study. And so the point that I want to make to the council and to the public is that everyone reverts back to the need for this particular study, although we see in other cities and other places where they are, uh, moving forward on particular goals, and we have yet to see any sort of case come forward where a contractor is doing, suing a city for reverse discrimination because they understand the intent of the goals, right? And yet, there still has been no proposal or actually support for a disparity study to be done so that we can actually implement any particular goals. So there's a lot of lip service to what we ought to do, but there's no money being put behind it to actually put in place the structural thing that we need so that we can move forward without any concerns about legal retribution.
You, you have raised two very interesting issues. In terms of placing money to do such a study, that's a policy decision for you all.
I understand that. That's what I'm saying.
The other issue, though, the other issue you raise is a risk issue. What is the likelihood? All I can do is address what the law says. Whether one is willing or not to take the risk in proceeding in the absence of such a study is a risk assessment. And again, a risk assessment, once you all are educated on what the law provides, whether one chooses, if you want to say at your peril or not, is a risk assessment. And that, again, is a policy issue. If the city makes a knowledgeable decision, meaning the corporate authorities or the city council makes a knowledgeable decision of undertaking, you know, maybe a bare bones or some kind of a rationale, even though it may not rise to the level of a statistical study, and they feel the risk level is less than 1% of a reverse discrimination suit, then a calculated decision has been made on risk assessment. Again, that, that's a policy decision as opposed to a legal decision. We just provide information.
I think tonight, we're focused on approving the capital improvement plan. This topic is something we will be working on this summer, and, um, Aaron, I hope you'll be involved in discussions on that. We do intend to revise our purchasing policy, and again, I think that procurement policy is going to address a lot of the concerns that have been raised. We'll be working, hopefully, with Fred Coleman, who's retired from the University of Illinois, who was in charge of, um, minority diversity, hiring at the, uh, facilities and services. So, so we fully intend to address this issue. Um, at this point, we have a motion on the floor by Eric, and was it seconded by Jared? Dean? Okay. Um, all those in favor, is it a roll call? Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Hammond?
Abstain.
Brown?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. Reports of special committees? Okay. Reports of officers? Kelly Merk, oh, Bill Gray and then Kelly, Kelly Murkowski.
Good evening. Um, so a memo was sent to you, um, the end of last week to provide information regarding the planned action. The City of Urbana takes to address homelessness in the community through our consolidated plan, um, our eligible activities that were noted with our various grants, and through participation in the continuum of care. Um, hopefully, the first points address the questions that you've had, but I'd, I'd like to go over number six in this memo showing, um, what it is that we are doing to address the issue of homelessness, um, with regard to youth. So through our consolidated social service funding, um, various shelters and agencies have, that serve homelessness, um, receive funding from the city. So that would be Courage Connection. Um, Rosecrans actually has a homeless youth program. Um, they were also had Roundhouse, but because of state funding, they no longer have that particular program, but they do have the homeless youth. So there are a variety of programs that, uh, work with, with youth and homelessness. So, um, and then the city, we run a transitional housing program using our public service funds, um, with our Community Fund Block grant. Um, we have 15% of our grant that we can use toward, um, public service, so that is where we also do our neighborhood cleanup. Um, but we have a transitional housing program. It's for homeless families with children. So we have two homes that we work with, um, families with youth under the age of 18. And then also noted here, the Urbana Home Consortium. Um, and I looked back, uh, since the beginning of when we first received our home grant, which is roughly over 20 years. We have put over $2 million in our home funds for the tenant-based rental assistance program, and which, um, and some of the major players for that is the Champaign County Regional Planning Commission. They use their portion of the home, um, funds in the consortium for the tenant-based rental assistance connected to their no-limits program. Um, also Courage Connection and Community Elements of Rosecrans have also run a TBR, a program. So, and that definitely addresses homelessness as well. Um, and recently, uh, we have a, an RFP that we did, uh... And recently, we have an RFP that we did for extra funds that we had. And Courage Connection received those. So, they are going to do a tenant-based rental assistance, going to be for the entire community, not just specifically their clients. And then, there were several houses that were built, example, by Homestead, that homebuyers fell through. And part of the home program is that you can then give that to a not-for-profit for a transitional, so it was for homelessness, for families. And then, other grants that we administer on behalf of agencies who serve the homeless is the Supportive Housing Program, Courage Connection, which for this year is about $89,000 for that program. And it is for family, for women, families with children. The Emergency Solutions Grant, we have been administering that since 2013 for different agencies, depending on what amount of funding that they would be requesting the state. So, we have administered for Crisis Nursery, for Greater Community AIDS Project, for the Salvation Army. Also, for the Emergency Family Shelter, that is run by the Regional Planning Commission. I can talk a bit more about that. And Time Center. So, those are some of the entities or the agencies that we have. And it's various amounts, $50,000. This year, it was only two agencies, so it was about $27,000 that we administered on behalf of these agencies. And we are also an active member and participant in the Council of Service Providers to the Homeless and the Champaign County Continuum of Care. And I'm actually on the Steering Committee or the Executive Committee for the Continuum. And we are also a member of the Steering Committee for the Emergency Shelter for Families, which, and this, there was a need assessment that was done, and it was determined that a shelter for families, emergency shelter, was needed. So, in collaboration with the Housing Authority of Champaign County, who received a grant from the state, from IDA, for two buildings on Park Street. And they renovated them, and then they gave for free the use of one of the buildings. And it's eight units, eight or nine units, for families with children under the age of 18. And then, particularly note is the Champaign County Community Coalition will be holding a forum later this summer to address youth homelessness. And we will be participating because of being part of the Champaign County Continuum of Care. In fact, tomorrow, there will be a regular meeting of the Continuum of Care and the Council of Service Providers to the Homeless. And Tracy Parsons with the Champaign County Community Coalition will be speaking on youth homelessness and this youth forum that they will be working on. So, I wanted to let you know that there are efforts in the community and with the city to address homelessness, particularly youth. I do have, there was a request for the Point in Time survey, and I do have copies of that. It's a summary, so it shows the number of households and the age, and it's sheltered versus unsheltered. So, I can pass that, if you'd like to take that. Also, part of the Emergency Shelter for Families, there is centralized intake, which was set up through the Continuum of Care to address homelessness. So, there is a number that someone is, if they're a family or individual is looking for a shelter or services, they can contact a centralized intake. And they have community resources and information. They will do an intake. They will do referrals. They try to keep details regarding all the shelters in town and the community and whether they have openings or not, so that they can, if they need to, place people on a waitlist and try to manage and prioritize the waitlist, so, based on HUD's priorities. So, this is a number that, again, Champaign County Regional Planning Commission manages this, and it's actually the staff person at the Shelter for Families. So, and then, lastly, I wanted to note that I have included in our annual action plan that we will be submitting to HUD as soon as we find out what our allocation will be. Because the president did not sign until beginning of May, HUD now has to go through their formula and their allocations to determine what our actual allocation will be. And that will probably not be till the end of the month. So, therefore, we've been told to wait on our annual action plan. So, there is a special, there's a section here regarding homeless and other special needs activities. And I have added this, that the City of Urbana has received comments from the community at large and city council regarding the need to specifically address homeless youth, K through 12, in addition to addressing overall homelessness involving chronically homeless individuals and families, families with children, veterans and their families, and accompanied youth. Staff will work with agencies involved in both the Champaign County Continuum of Care and the Council of Service Providers to the Homeless to address this issue of homeless youth in our community. With that, if there's any questions. Bill?
Does the township also have a representative on the Continuum of Care?
I believe that they've been invited. And I'll certainly talk with Danielle again about, I believe I mentioned it to her, but I'll let her know again.
I imagine she'd be interested if you could let her know about the meeting tomorrow.
Yes, I will do that.
Any other comments? Mike?
Real briefly, I just wanted to mention that the Urbana Free Library Foundation has entered into a contract to acquire the all of their property. We raised over $100,000 with our annual fund drive. Very proud of the community.
Great. Just to follow up on Kelly. I wanted to, I distributed a memo to council members, but I just wanted to clarify the issue of the resolution that was discussed a couple of weeks ago, that the concern was the city had not responded to the resolution that was passed by the Urbana School Board. And I've done some digging, talked to Superintendent Owen, city manager of Champaign, several other people. The resolution was passed by the school board on October 18th. Superintendent Owen shared the resolution with Mayor Pressing in a letter dated October 19th. Also, the same resolution was sent to the Champaign city manager. At that time, the letter was, the resolution was sent just to the mayor. The Urbana city council at that time did not get a copy of the resolution or, nor were we copied on any response. And to date, I haven't found yet a written response from Mayor Pressing to that resolution. However, I would note that Mayor Pressing was ill with shingles during the time that that whole issue came about. So, it's possible it just didn't get dealt with. However, a couple of things to note. One, the resolution asked the City of Urbana and the City of Champaign to quote, "instruct the Housing Authority of Champaign County to form a community-wide committee to study the issue of homelessness in Champaign County." And asked that the committee be charged with conducting the needs assessment and making recommendations about resources and partnerships needed to address homelessness across the county. For the, just so new council members understand and the public understand, the City of Urbana, the City of Champaign do not have direct authority over the Housing Authority of Champaign County. We each appoint two members to the Champaign County Housing Authority Board. Currently, those members are Regina Parnell and Eddie Adair. But once those people are appointed, they are and act as an independent policy board for the Housing Authority. We can make requests, but we cannot direct or instruct the Housing Authority to do anything. Again, as Kelly noted, there are two entities that are the lead agencies on addressing homelessness. That's the Council of Service Providers to the Homeless and the Champaign County Continuum of Care, where an active participant involves. City staff serves on the Executive Committee of the Champaign County Continuum of Care. I talked to Tracy Parsons this morning. There will be a forum this summer to address family and youth homelessness. Will participate in the forum. And I also serve on the Executive Committee of the Community Coalition. And one of the major sources of funding dealing with homelessness are the Community Development Block grants and the home funds. Those have both been zeroed out in at least one of the budgets proposed by President Trump. And that's over $1 million in grant funds each year that comes to the City of Urbana that go directly to our neighborhoods to address housing for our families. We received $376,000 in CDBG funds this year and $680,000 in home funds. We use the funds to partner with Habitat for Humanity to remove blighted structures and pay for construction materials. We are building Highland Green in Urbana, which is 33 units of energy-efficient, affordable housing. And that includes nine units for formerly homeless veterans. The HUD funds are used to pay for transitional housing units for homeless families, the annual neighborhood cleanups that occur in our CDBG areas. We pay for home repairs for seniors, tenant-based rental assistance programs. And it also pays for a lot of the much-needed infrastructure projects, like the Lenora Adams Pass, I believe, was CDBG funds. And I think streetlights on North Matthews were...
Yes.
So, so many, many things that go directly to our lower-income neighborhoods come from those two funding sources. But, but again, the coordination for homelessness issues in Champaign County are done under the Council of Service Providers and the Champaign County Continuum of Care. I have one request. Terry Townsend, did you wish to address the council? You'll have five minutes, and the clerk will give you a one-minute heads-up.
Well, hopefully, I won't be here that long. Let me back up and remind you all that, well, some of you that don't know me, Mr. Munson does, I served 10 years on the Housing Authority. I have spent as much time in the regional office and in Washington DC as anybody in Champaign County. There's probably nobody that knows Housing Authority law like I do. I am aware of everything that you said. You're absolutely correct. Most of what is going on is working quite well, but we still have a crisis. I'm not talking about adult homelessness. I'm not talking about youth homelessness. I'm talking about student homelessness, what's going on in the schools, council. Is there something called the Illinois Cooperation Law? There is. That is something that was not mentioned. I will be going to the meetings tomorrow, and I will be talking about these things. I will be talking about how you're doing such a good job, but we still have a crisis. Now, I turn your attention to the Chicago Tribune, June 2. They had a wonderful article on student homelessness. I would encourage you to read that so that you would understand this issue. I didn't think it was going to be this tough, but this is becoming very, very difficult to make you understand. I'm not talking about social service providers to youth. I'm talking about school districts. It's totally different. What I don't understand is that you don't understand that. I didn't come here to attack you or to go to Champaign to attack them. I'm trying to make us understand that there's 1,000 kids in Champaign and possibly a closer number to that in Urbana, sleeping in trucks. And your consolidated plan, Champaign's consolidated plan, do not mention student homelessness. Now, when I first talked to Libby Tyler, the first thing she said, "We do address this broadly." I said, "You certainly do, and you're certainly doing a good job." And the Continuum of Care, which was not created locally, it's mandated by HUD, is doing a wonderful job nationwide. There's much more work to be done. When I talked to HUD about your consolidated plan, they said, "An excellent suggestion. It should be in there, specifically student homelessness." Lastly, Los Angeles is doing some things with Double Up. They're coming up with a municipal tax to address those issues. We're not even talking about them in Champaign or Urbana because we don't even understand them yet. That's okay. Well, I'm writing, and I will write this up in a way that hopefully everybody can understand. You're still not talking about student homelessness. Now, why did I even come here tonight to talk to you? I already knew that there would be some misunderstanding, if you want to call it that. Didn't come here to attack what you're doing. I want you to understand that. As we move forward, I'm not pulling my opposition to your plan. I will be meeting with HUD's regional staff. We will talk about this. One minute. But it won't be just you. It'll be Champaign. It'll be other municipalities as correlation for the homeless throughout the country began to activate around this specific issue. Not youth homelessness, not adult homelessness, student homelessness. And I apologize that I wasn't prepared to really go into this in depth. But stay tuned. That's coming.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Erin?
So, I know that terminology differs. You know, one might assume youth-included students. What age bracket are we talking about if youth is... What does youth age bracket include if it does not include a student population?
Well, we're talking about K-12 homeless, students that are in schools K-12, K through 1 through 12. The problem with talking about youth homelessness, we don't talk about the kind of issues that students have when they're at school. When you start talking about youth homeless, it's a broad term. And maybe a social service agency is partnering with the Housing Authority to come up with a shelter. Maybe that's different than student homelessness that needs transportation, which has been identified by some of the national people as a specific need for student homelessness. So, there's a difference there.
So, if we're addressing, or through any of the programs, using the CDBG funds to increase housing, to what degree does that encompass the students? Because I'm going to, I guess I'm going to go out on a limb here and say that, to me, it appears that student homelessness would be individuals where their parents are also homeless? Does that make sense, or is that not the case?
In Chicago, for example, what they're doing is they're approaching it from a different angle. They are using the term "double up." And they're using that, that's, as I said the last time I was here, that's a new term for overcrowding. But they're approaching that, partnering with a social service agency, to come up with a different slant, approaching it for kids that are actually matriculating in an institution of learning as opposed to someone who just doesn't have shelter. Homelessness has a whole bunch of legs. And the legs that come out of education are totally different than one that just doesn't have shelter. That's why it has to be specifically identified and addressed. That's why HUD... That's why HUD didn't take issue with me when I contacted them, because I wanted to know, when I, after I looked at your plan, after I looked at some of the other plans, why that was not in there, and did that present a problem? HUD said, yes. McKenney-Vento, that particular law, it's problematic, too. It doesn't address all of those needs. Al Gore said in Tennessee, when they passed McKenney-Vento, this is just a start. This is a huge, huge problem. And if you begin to look at your action plans, they don't address those things specifically. That's why I'm here.
Okay. Well, I think we would all benefit from information that you can provide us. I think we've got a lot to learn here. And can you send it to the council?
Yes, ma'am. And I, and when I get to writing this, I make sure you have information from what I'm writing. I would also like the minutes, and I would also, from, from the last time that we, that I was here, we spoke about that. And I would also like to know what was provided to you so that I can kind of make, draft this thing, so you'll see I'm not attacking you, attacking Champaign. I'm trying to make you see there's a specific need that Unit 116 has.
Sure.
That's different.
Yes.
Than a kid that's sleeping in a truck.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll get that information to you.
Thank you. I have a quick question.
Yes.
So, I've heard of schools and in other communities setting up things such as laundry facilities, and schools setting up food pantries that are directly in the schools. Are these some of the issues that you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Just so that I'm clear, you're talking about allowing not only for somebody to have a place to sleep, which is a lot of the stuff that we're talking about here, like trying to present a roof over their head, but also what are the other additional needs that students, special needs, I'm going to call them special needs, that students who are homeless have in order for them to be able to go to school and for them to function, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right, just to be clear.
And, and, ma'am, those, those needs are different.
Yes.
And they haven't been set out in your plan. And, and one last thing, the reason why Congress put the action plan in this, I mean, the consolidated plan, in an action plan, that people like me would show up and say these things to you. It is my hope, at some point, the school district and, and, and the city of Urbana will sit down and, and kind of tease those things apart, because the mere fact is, we still have those problems. And all the good things that they're doing, we still have kids in trucks, we still have kids that are school problems, and our best, community problems.
Okay, thank you. Look forward to getting that information. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, new business. Ordinance number 2017-06-024, which is an ordinance approving a major variance for 613 West Washington Street, and Bill Gray has a officer report.
Staff report, yes. Thank you. Sorry I didn't get up here sooner. I just wanted to announce, you saw information in your packet, but for the public, the Illinois Department of Transportation will be having a open house public information meeting Thursday night from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. That will be at the MTD Building on 1101 East University in Urbana, and they will be discussing the proposed safety improvements along University Avenue between Wright and Maple, and also a short segment of Wright Street between White and University Avenue. So, this goes back a few years ago when they did a road safety audit, and it's culminated into some suggested improvements to help make this corridor safer. Again, this will be Thursday night between 4:00 and 7:00 p.m. at the MTD Building on 1101 East University Avenue.
Thanks, Bill. Any other staff reports? It's okay. Marcus Ritchie will be presenting this case, which is ordinance number 2017-06-024, which is an ordinance approving a major variance for 613 West Washington Street, ZVA case number 2017 MAJ-03.
Thank you. Good evening. This case is a request by Clifford Singer and Brigitta Piekka for a major variance to construct an addition which would encroach four feet into the required five-foot west side yard setback at 613 West Washington Street in the R2 Single Family Residential District. This variance is requested to allow the addition to maintain the exterior wall line of the existing house, which is located on the south side of West Washington Street between Bucy Avenue and Orchard Street, as shown in the exhibit. Nichols subdivision was originally platted in 1927 into six equally sized lots, but then subsequent land transfers created new property boundaries four feet east of these original lot boundaries. The house was then built in 1953, one foot east of the new west property line, which meant it encroached four feet into the required west side yard setback. There is no evidence that a side yard setback variance was issued at the time of construction in 1953. The subject property is located in the R2 Single Family Residential District, and the Urbana Comprehensive Plan's future land use designation for the property and surrounding area is residential urban pattern, as shown in the exhibit. The 187-square-foot addition would contain a full bathroom and a small closet, and the attached site plans and elevations show the proposed changes to the floor plan, roof lines, and elevation. This is Exhibit D. Here on the screen, you have the addition in the southwest corner. Here is the bathroom and the small closet. This is the existing wall line of the house. This area is currently a deck, so they're proposing to basically demolish this portion of the deck and construct an addition that would share the west line of the house. And the roof line would also maintain the same roof line as the existing house. Also, a landscape buffer and fence currently screen the house front and west property line. Here is the, the Washington Street view of the home with landscape buffer along the north side, and this is the landscape buffer on the west side of the house, and the addition would be located here behind these bushes. The third picture shows roughly the, the deck as it currently stands, and the addition would be roughly 11 feet to the south, and then 17 feet to the east, and encompass this area. The roof line would be maintained, would actually be adjusted upward so that it would maintain the same roof here. We can see this, this dotted line is the new roof line, and this dotted area is the addition that's proposed. A nearby storm sewer will not impact construction of the addition, as reported by Assistant City Engineer Brad Bennett. The Zoning Board of Appeals found that the requested variance met the variance criteria as detailed in the staff report. The findings are also summarized in today's staff report. City council has the following options in these cases, this case, to approve the variance, to approve the variance with terms and conditions, or to deny the variance. City staff recommended approval to the Zoning Board of Appeals with one condition. The Zoning Board of Appeals voted unanimously at their May 8 meeting to forward this case to city council with a recommendation to approve with the condition that the site is developed in general compliance with the site plan and elevations entitled renovation plan drawings for 613 West Washington, Urbana, and dated May 8. Those are the plans and elevations that are currently in the exhibit, allowing changes necessary to accommodate the storm sewer near the western property line, but do not expand the encroachment further west. That is the end of the staff report. I'm happy to answer questions. Also, the applicants are here in attendance and available to answer questions.
Any questions? Mary Alice?
Yes, so, I thought it was nice that the applicants actually gathered signatures from their neighbors.
Yes.
But I was having a little difficulty reading some of the addresses.
Sure.
So, I noticed that one of the addresses that's most, would be most impacted is 701 West Washington, right? It's directly on the, on the west side of the house, if I'm looking at this correctly.
Yes.
So, if I look at the, the addresses here, I don't believe that one is here, although some people didn't put their address on here. So, I'm just curious if that person signed.
Actually, so, there are, there are four signatures here. People printed their names next to or underneath, so it was somewhat hard to decipher them out. I believe the property to the west was not represented by a signature. It is a rental property and managed, so it is not owner-occupied.
And there was, there is no, nobody who testified at the hearing, is that correct?
No, there were no comments made. I believe there was a, a letter submitted by the southerly adjacent neighbor that said that they had no objections to the property. But the, the, the variance was properly posted, and all neighbors within 250 feet were notified by mail.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Bill?
I'll move approval of ordinance number 2017-06-024.
Second.
Is that with the condition? Or is that implicit in that?
I think it's implicit in the ordinance, isn't it?
Okay. So, we get a motion by Bill, seconded by Erin. Any further discussion? Does this require a roll call? Bill?
I'm just going to be disciplined to lose a member of Ward 4, but my loss is Mary Alice's gain, so.
So noted in the record. All those in favor, roll call?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ammons?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have some appointments to boards and commissions. I'm pleased to appoint to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission Audrey Ishi. Audrey is currently a member of the commission in an at-large seat, but she will now be representing the Urbana School District. The at-large seat is open. Well, that opened up the at-large seat. So, Audrey's term would continue until June 30, 2019. For the at-large seat, I am recommending Nancy Westcott, who's been a city of the, resident of the city of Urbana for the last 36 years and works part-time at the Illinois State Water Survey. So, she will be filling the at-large seat for a term ending June 30, 20, that should And so, is there a motion?
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I'll be appointing, I recommend appointment, reappointment of Elizabeth Hannan to the Police Pension Board for a term ending May 31, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Erin, seconded by Eric. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up, I'm very happy to recommend the appointment of Todd Rent to the position of Director of Human Resources for the city of Urbana. Todd worked for the city for about 10 years as human relations officer and the human resources manager. He left for a few months, but due to some openings, we are able to offer him this position again as Director of Human Resources. We're very happy to welcome him back. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll motion it.
Moved by Dean.
Second.
Seconded by Erin. Any questions for Mr. Rent? He's here. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Rent. Welcome back. And last but not least, I'm pleased to recommend that Harley D. Rutledge be appointed lieutenant in the Urbana Police Department. He currently serves as Sergeant Criminal Investigations Division, 21 years of experience in law enforcement with 1,800 hours of professional training. His resume was also included in your packet. Is there a motion?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Eric. Any questions? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Congratulations, Lieutenant. Seeing no further business before this body, this meeting is adjourned.